Thanks. Good afternoon and welcome to the January 19th, 2021 Lone Tree City Council Study Session. This study session will be conducted as a virtual meeting held electronically in accordance with council adopted policy number 20-01. Members of the public access this meeting electronically. Council does not vote during our study sessions since presentations are for information and discussion only. Therefore, there is no public comment during our study session, but join us for our council meeting at 7:00 PM if you would like to provide public comment. We are going to start off this evening with a discussion concerning an ordinance amending Chapter 4 of the City of Lone Tree's municipal code to add a new section 4-3-140 and a new Article 6 concerning construction use tax and fee waivers for qualifying attainable housing projects. We're going to start off with our staff presentation, Kristin Baumgartner, our Deputy City Manager. Kristin, good evening, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Really excited to be back this afternoon to go through this presentation with you and I'm really excited. This has been definitely a group effort with the Community Development Department, the Legal Department, and we actually have a couple experts on the line. Diane with the Douglas County Housing Partnership and Catherine from CHAFA are also calling in. So I'm going to go through the presentation, but we have plenty of people here to answer questions if I'm not able to answer them for council this evening. But thank you for giving me time to present the draft ordinance we've put together. So next slide, please. So just again, some background in that city council has really looked at attainable housing over the last several years and has adopted different policies, making this a priority for the city as we continue specifically to develop on the east side of I-25. And we do have a lot of policy documents already in place, including our comprehensive plan, our east side suburb area plans, requirements in the east side annexation agreement that was approved in November of 2017 that actually lays out required number of attainable housing units on the east side. And then subsequent to that in July of 2018, the Ridge Gate attainable housing plan was adopted. Next slide, please. So in the attainable housing plan, the statement of need and the intent that the city and Ridge Gate put together was that they recognize the importance of having and preserving a diverse housing stock that provides options and choices for every life stage and allows residents to remain in Lone Tree as they age while also supporting housing for a variety of income levels, providing an opportunity for people to live close to their jobs in Lone Tree. Next slide, please. So throughout these documents, though, none of these require the city to provide any type of direct waivers or incentives. And as you're aware, we are very fortunate that we are having our first project come forward to city council for consideration next month. And we started looking at what we could possibly do to support that project, but also future projects within the city. So staff is recommending adding a new section to Chapter 4, which is the finance and revenue section of our code to provide an option for tax credits and fee waivers for projects that meet certain attainable housing criteria. We do have a lot of things in place specifically to the east side, but the code change would apply citywide. So as redevelopment happened in the rest of the city, this would also be applicable. Next slide, please. So kind of to remind council where we're at with this process, we did present to council at our January 5th, 2021 study session, a very broad framework that staff had begun discussing, and really we wanted to get some feedback from council at that meeting. Some of the things that we heard from council was the desire to incentivize for sale units if possible, that council supported a tiered approach, that you did want staff to explore appropriate AMI limits, and also to research market demand and limitations on mixed income products. So we've been able to do all of that, and we also subsequently held meetings with both the Douglas County Housing Partnership and the Colorado Housing and Finance Authority to get feedback from them as well. And the draft ordinance that was in the packet has incorporated this various feedback. Next slide, please. So the first part is we are proposing a new section be added to Chapter 4, which would be Section 4-3-140 specifically under construction use tax. And this would be talking about a construction use tax credit. In this section, it would be specific only to construction use tax. It would be up to 100% tax credit. We did draft the ordinance to separate criteria to include a difference between owner occupied dwelling units versus rental dwelling units. And either of these things would require city council approval. Next slide, please. And so we're going to talk about the rental criteria first because this was definitely, through some of our research, kind of an easier one to tackle. What we learned as we were getting into more detail about rental criteria is that, as council is aware, rental projects that have meet attainable requirements do qualify for low-income housing tax credits through CHAFA. And that is something, a tool that is only available for rental products. And so we'll talk about that a little more when we talk about the for sale, but those really are used for rental products only. We also did learn from CHAFA that these are very, very competitive, which I think we knew that to an extent as our own project took, you know, two cycles to get approved. But that they are so competitive that a lot of times mixed income projects don't go after CHAFA low-income housing tax credits because they are so competitive that a lot of times they really do focus on kind of the fully affordable projects. And so a lot of the mixed income projects don't go through the process for that reason. But wanting to keep in mind council's feedback that they do want to encourage the mixed income projects, we did in the draft ordinance put in that we would require a minimum of 20% of units must provide housing for persons or households with incomes at or below weighted average of 60% area median income. We thought by lowering the minimum requirement down, we would still have some incentive for developers to consider even adding some of these into a larger project. We did keep in the criteria that we would want them to maintain affordable for 40 years. And then for rentals, we're suggesting a tiered approach based on direct proportion to the percentage of attainable for rental units provided. So for example, if a project comes in with 25% of total dwelling units provided are qualify as attainable, the city may credit a 25% tax credit. So we thought for rental projects, it would be easiest to have kind of a formula that we follow that depending on the percentage, it could go up to 100%. So then it would both hopefully incent mixed income projects would still be able to look at this ordinance and have some incentive, but obviously the more you do, the more you would give back as a possible tax credit. Before I move on to the owner occupied, if you can go back one slide, thank you. I just wanted to pause for a minute and see if council has any specific questions on kind of rentals.
Thanks, Kristin. And I will start with Councilmember Shaw, our resident expert on council. Do you have any questions regarding this or comments?
No questions, but a comment. When I looked at this and what you're going to talk about next, what a wonderful and creative solution. So thank you for all the work you've done to create this.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes, Kristin, could you offer just a little more detail on why there is a problem with mixed income projects in terms of approval?
I actually might phone a friend if she's on the line and ask Catherine from CHAFA if she's available to see if she wants to add some insight. I think she might be better versed to kind of answer that question. Catherine, are you available? Well, Jay, do you know if Catherine is able to connect?
Yeah, I did see two calls come through and we admitted both of them.
Hello? Oh, Catherine, this is Mayor Malay. Welcome and thank you for being here. Did you, were you able to hear the question from Councilmember Anderson?
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmembers. Sorry for the technology piece there. Let's see, so I'm Catherine Grosskopf. I'm with CHAFA and I'm the manager of the housing credit program. And Mayor Malay, I remember your presentation for Ridge Gate, so it was a wonderful addition for that application. The question was around a little bit more information on mixed income approaches and how those work with analysis of the tax credits. CHAFA certainly allows and accepts applications that are mixed income, so a portion of the total units being scheduled to serve housing credit income ranges and maybe a portion that would not be more market rate. A couple of things to consider when applying for competitive credits at CHAFA, often the way the pro forma works drives a developer to look at more of 100% tax credit eligibility for all units in order to maximize the amount of credit available to construct the project. Any unit that would not be a Lytec or a housing credit unit, i.e. a market unit, would not benefit from the tax credit. So separate financing would be required. Another thing that's a little more complicated I would offer is that often investors prefer to see a unit, to see a development 100% housing credit. The appetite is that that maximizes the benefit for their investment. It's not to say that investors don't consider mixed income, but more commonly we see that the preference is 100% affordable with the idea being that it would mitigate any market risk if the housing credit units weren't having as much success as the market rate units.
So could I ask a follow-up if Councilmember Anderson, do you have a follow-up? Do you want to ask anything else?
No, go ahead, Jackie.
Okay, thank, thank you. So I think municipalities are interested in the more mixed use. Do you see any, any change or any path forward, Catherine, where we might be able to, is there, is it really all about the financing? And if you had a magic wand that you could change the financing, and we certainly can't do it here tonight, but I guess I would be curious in understanding that better because all the mayors and all the council members that I, and county electeds that I speak to really like the idea of having these projects integrated in the community and kind of indistinguishable. And do you think they could be successful in our communities that way as opposed to just standalone projects? But it does, it doesn't seem like there's anything we can do to move the needle. So do you have any recommendations, not for us tonight necessarily, but for addressing this issue in a more holistic way in the state?
Yeah, I really echo your sentiment that it makes good sense and it makes for good policy in good neighborhoods. I do see it sometimes through developers, if they're doing like a PUD, maybe a portion of that, they're looking at a tax credit development and maybe a portion has a non-tax credit development, but in some ways it is an integrated living experience for residents in all of those communities. One response that Congress offered just about a year ago, and it's benefiting Ridge Gate apartments, for example, is the ability now to expand the eligibility of set aside units within a project. So no longer having 60% AMI be the max eligibility, but a third option was given for average income. So a spanning between 80% AMI, even down to 20% AMI with an average of 60. And it was really acknowledging that housing challenges are growing and touching more income spectrums, I think, in our country, and also recognizing that that flexibility often was needed in different markets. So it's not a perfect answer to your question. It's sort of a, how the program, though, has made some response to that kind of concern broadly.
Great. And I don't want to take the whole evening to talk about this, but that it is an issue that the metro mayors really are very interested in and wanting to know if there's legislative changes that need to happen or if it's just strictly the, you can't get the financing, so you can't do it. So I'm, I'll be in touch with you. We'll get back to the Lone Tree business right now, but on that, unless, unless any of the other, Mike, do you have any follow-up on that specific issue? And before I touch base with the other councilmembers?
No, I'm okay.
Okay, thanks. All right. Mayor Proton Brunick, any comments on this rental criteria?
No, no questions for me. Thank you.
Okay. And Councilmember Carpenter, anything?
No questions. I appreciate the flexibility and the prioritization of for sale, but I guess we'll get to that as well. So not at this point.
Great. Okay, Kristin, back to you.
Okay, awesome. Thank you, and thank you Catherine for your assistance. Next slide, please.
Kristin, can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, that's Diane.
Diane?
Diane, do you want to weigh in on that?
I did, because I did make a phone call to Shea Properties to ask them their opinion. And I got not what I expected, which is what Catherine said, that they felt hemmed in by the financing. They actually said that they see two other reasons why they like to keep their market rate and affordable different, separate. And first is that they feel that they put more expensive amenities into their market rate properties. And secondly, that they, because the amount of paperwork and information that you have to collect on the tenants is pretty extensive, that they train their staff differently on how to manage the properties. And so they, they like having them separate. And, and again, wouldn't have an issue with having one building next to each other, but, but they like keeping them separate. So I just thought I'd tell you that that was a developer opinion as well.
I appreciate, I appreciate that, Diane, that there's food for thought there, how one could work with the bureaucracy or even have, yeah, good to know. I appreciate your feedback, feedback there. Okay, Kristin, let's move on to the next one. And Diane and Catherine, please feel free to interject because council really, you're our experts and we want to learn. So thank you for that.
Thank you. So on the owner occupied criteria, this one, as we continue to do some research, really appreciated the feedback we got from the experts. And the first thing is we did just add in generally in the ordinance itself, a provision to specifically incentivize development of attainable for sale to provide more housing product options for homebuyers. So that was more just at the beginning of the ordinance, we did want to, we felt we heard enough from council that this was something that is important to you. So we did add that as kind of a provision that we are trying to accomplish with this ordinance. We kept the minimum of 20% of units, the same as in the rental, but we did change it to say that the weighted average AMI is at 80% or less versus 60%. And that really came from feedback from Diane at the Douglas County Housing Partnership, and then confirmed when we talked to CHAFA that for homebuyers that are trying to qualify for homeownership, it's really difficult at the 60% or below AMI. And so it really realistically needs to be at a minimum at 80%. CHAFA also told us that, you know, though they do not look at these types of projects to qualify for the low-income tax credits, CHAFA obviously does do a lot of work with affordable homeownership by connecting people to the private lending community, doing down payment assistance, offering free homebuyer education classes, and that they kind of characterize what, what they look at as a minimum AMI for homeownership. And last year for CHAFA, it was at 93% or below the AMI. You know, Diane had even mentioned, and she might want to speak to this, that she could see us even going to 100% or below AMI in this category. So we started at 80% to, for discussion with council, but it does seem that, you know, that that it needs to be a higher percentage than for the rentals to be realistic as far as qualifying for homeownership, even under attainable housing. We'll come back to that in just a minute, but we did also keep this to a minimum of 40 years. And then we specifically, in this category, wanted to just keep it somewhat at council's discretion by saying that owner occupied housing types meeting the above criteria will be reviewed by council and considered up to 100% tax credit. Because these types of deals seem to be more challenging, but also just they vary in what might come up with as far as a creative idea from a developer, we didn't want to have such a prescriptive formula as we did with the rental products. And so we did keep this pretty general to add flexibility that it would be kind of looked at on the case by case situation by city council. And so with that, I'll open it up for questions and see if you'd like Catherine or Diane to speak anymore on kind of the AMI limits in this area.
I think that makes good sense. Before I take, open it up for council questions, if we could hear what their thoughts are about the weighted average and the 80%, weighted average of 80% AMI. So I'm gonna, I'll go to Diane first and then ask Catherine if she has any other comments.
Well, I guess the first thing that I would say is for any of us who've been homeowners, you know that dishwashers break, furnaces go out, you know, repairs need to be made. And when, when someone's income is at 80% or below, they normally don't have the room and the flexibility to be able to handle those things which are needed for homeownership, the unexpected repairs.
So are you suggesting the 80% is high enough? Kristin mentioned the 93%. I guess that that's what I was trying to understand or get a little more detail on.
It's really going to depend on the product. And I have to say that currently we don't have product in Douglas County that probably would, the 93% would be better, but I don't mind seeing 80% in the, in the language of your code because then you have flexibility.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Catherine, anything to add to that?
It's a little bit of a separate question back, but if a developer qualified for this code benefit, is it a one-time benefit or do you have an expectation that the beneficiaries, the homeowners, that that home upon second and third and fourth sale continues in some kind of program or is it a one-time benefit to the first homebuyer?
The City of Lone Tree does not assess a property tax. So the, this was, would be the use, construction use tax, I believe. Kristin, can you confirm that?
Yes, it would be for construction use tax, which is only assessed initially at the time of building permit. So it would just be a one-time incentive on that, on that first.
So the builder, though, to future residents, it needs to be kept attainable for 40 years.
Correct. It's not, it's not a reduction on a annual tax bill to the homeowner. Most municipalities do have some kind of a mill levy on property, but we don't, Catherine. So there's, we don't collect anything else on that home to offer back.
And I think our hope is that if the developers are paying less in these fees, that that will reflect into the price, you know, that usually I think those costs are added into the price of the house and so that that would keep the price of the house at a reasonable level.
At a more reasonable, anyway.
Yeah.
And so if that initial homeowner sells, how does the guarantee of the 40-year attainability continue?
I don't think it would, right? Once they sell.
You couldn't sell it for market price. You'd have to sell it. I think a lot of these do a, you know, like a minimum or a maximum of 3% annual appreciation or something like that. It's, it limits the amount that a buyer can make on their home, but it's, they bought it less than market. That's the only way you keep it.
What you've written up doesn't describe that. So you would have to have an entity, which I assume you'd come to us to administer that.
Yes, Diane, trust or a deed, a deed trust.
Yeah, I'm Linda Mitchell. Do you want to weigh in on how you wrote that into the ordinance and with our discussions on that?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. Diane and Catherine being on here. I'm sorry for the echoing. We specifically didn't write anything into the ordinance that specifically because we do expect to impose or adopt some sort of policies and procedures on an administrative level to help further implement this program in its current framework form. But I would anticipate that there would be a deed restriction or covenant, something on the, recorded against the property, right, that would maintain its affordability. And I think Councilmember Shaw is correct in, in thinking that, you know, any future sale of those lots would, or properties would be limited to a percentage of increase in fair market value. So they couldn't sell it for a huge profit. But, you know, those are the details we still need to explore and put into a policy which we've put in here that, a provision that authorizes the city manager to adopt rules and regulations to further implement the provisions of, of the regulations. Does that answer?
Yeah, we've had some experience in attempting this kind of a project and it wasn't with the opportunity to get significant lower cost in building the housing. It was a modest decrease in the cost and it was not successful because people were not willing to give up future appreciation to get into, these were condominiums. And so we, we'll, we'll have to, you know, work through some of those issues, but it's going to have to be a significant decrease in the cost for, for it to be that saleable, I guess is the way to say it. Do you have any good examples, Catherine, where you've seen it work?
Well, I do think programs like this do work. And there's examples in metro and then mountain resort type communities. The city and county of Denver has a program as well as other smaller areas. What I have sort of understood over the years is that to make a program successful, like you had said, Diane, it has to be enough different from market product. And I guess I've heard something like 30% difference in price. To make sort of the, the traction of the price worth the sacrifice of, of loss to future appreciation and to make the program overall effective for, for the municipality or the, the area trying to achieve, you know, housing availability for lots of community members.
So we, we, on a philosophical level, love the idea, but don't have a whole lot of examples of where it's been real successful.
Because the incentive isn't enough to get, to reach a 30, so the incentive the city is offering for a for-sale product is not enough to achieve a 30% reduction in the cost of the product. Is that?
Right.
And so if you're not getting, it's got to be 30% less than market rate and that, we don't have enough to give back, you know, in fees to drop the price by that amount. And so, so folks, if they can afford to get in and they'd rather pay a little more because they think they're going to be able to get, get more than, in appreciation. Is that the problem?
Yes.
Well, I think that's how I would agree, yeah.
Well, darn it. So I don't want to just put something into place so we can pat ourselves on the back and say, look at us if it's not going to, if it's not going to and say, look at us if it's not going to, if it's not going to move the needle. Council, let's see if any other thoughts, comments, and again, we'll go alphabetically. Councilmember Anderson?
Well, I like the opportunity of providing a mechanism for developers to look at and to think about whether or not it's worthwhile in terms of the construction use savings to go in that direction. I, I'm struggling at the same time with the lack of popularity of this incentive tax credit and whether it's worth all the effort to put the program in place. So I'm, I'm on the fence on this issue.
So just so I understand, Councilmember Anderson, you're supportive of the idea, but, but this doesn't sound like it's going to move the needle. So why are we going through the process? Is that what I'm hearing?
Thank you, Jackie.
Okay, yeah. All right. Councilmember Carpenter?
Yeah, so I like the idea. I love the concept. I just want to make sure there's a market there for it. So that's, and that's why I always rely on, you know, outside council and internal as well, staff to make those decisions. But I just want to make sure that it does have legs.
Right, right. Councilmember Shaw?
So I, I too am in favor of the concept and I still think we might be able to go back to the drawing board with the numbers. I think one of the problems, as Diane was explaining, if your area median income is, you know, 60 grand, you can't, you can't buy much in Douglas County with a, you know, $50,000 salary, right, or less. And so part of the, part of the problem of making the connection between the income and the real estate price here in this county that seems very expensive is, is the first part of the challenge. So maybe if it started as 100% of area median income and maybe was, and there were some limits on the amount of the appreciation, we could find a, a price point or a percentage point to make the purchase price affordable enough to take the, the small amount of appreciation that someone might get. Again, real estate doesn't always go up, but it's gone up so much, so many of the years of the last probably 30, that it, it seems like it always goes up. But I do think that if we kind of work with the numbers and see what it would take to qualify for a home that might be 30% discounted, maybe we're able to give, we want to help the builder give this and maybe if our construction tax credit is on more than just the affordable units, they get enough to discount the affordable units that first time. I, I don't know. I think it, it may involve some, some math, but it, I'm not ready to give up on its, on the possibilities yet. I think, I think we, we have to keep looking. It's that important.
So when to, when to encourage this, I would say that where I have seen it work is when there's other soft funds that can be brought in. So if, if per chance, you know, the state division of housing did a program where they would have some funds that would go in, in combination with what the city of Lone Tree would do, then you might be able to make it work. And, you know, without a crystal ball and not knowing what might be available, I, I think it's, it's a good thing to have the concept in your code, but maybe not too prescriptive because that way it gives you more flexibility if there's some other, some other options.
It's a good point as well.
Thank you, Diane. Mayor Proton Brennack, do you, what are your thoughts?
No, I would just kind of agree with what's been said so far. Really appreciate the work to try to get us a solution here, but it sounds like we're missing some really basic, practical ways in which to implement. And ultimately, that's got to be sorted before we can do any kind of ordinance.
I would like staff to explore what these other soft funds might be. I'd like to have an understanding of what they are and how they may be accessed. And then the other question I have is that, is there, Diane, you may know the answer. Are there any for-sale, affordable, deed-restricted properties in Douglas County?
I, I am not aware of any.
I wonder if there is an opportunity to explore something with the county. And has, has the Housing Partnership looked at this issue and had any conversations with our county commissioners about what they may be able to do to encourage affordability?
No, we haven't.
I guess, you know, if it's a, I'd love to understand where the commissioners might be on this because those are others, I guess that to me is another soft fund potentially, right?
Right.
So, those are two things I'd like to hear more about before we move forward with the owner occupied piece of this. It sounds like council's still on the fence a little bit. Is there any, are there any additional things you would like staff to explore that could help resolve some of the questions and concerns from council? Those are two I have.
Mayor, if, you know, if this product has worked in the metro area and some of the mountain areas, it might be useful for us to understand what were the dynamics in terms of financing, you know, the, the AMI limits, et cetera, that made it work.
Yeah.
I'm not sure. As I had to better understand, if it's working somewhere, why is it working there?
And, and it does get kind of complicated too, and we can definitely do that on the owner occupied. As we started delving into this, we were like, wow, there's a lot to this specific piece. Some communities do things with land leases and inclusionary zoning, so it can get a lot more, there's other policy decisions that can go into it as well in other communities, I think. Councilmember Anderson, outside of incentives, it can be based on zoning and different, different things of that nature. So one question I would like to ask council, though, is comfort, and we can talk about this at the end too, but maybe consideration on moving forward with the rental component if we feel comfortable with that, with kind of our pending application that's going to be moving forward and then can continue to research and revisit this and, you know, propose additional amendments to the ordinance at that time. But we, this one probably will take us a little bit more time on owner occupied to answer some of these additional questions.
Great, Kristen. Now I will poll council on that. I think Jay, Councilmember Carpenter, was trying to ask a question. So Jay, I can't see you on my screen unfortunately, but did you still have a question or a comment?
Yeah, a comment more so. So as Diane alluded to, I think it makes sense that, at least for the owner occupied piece to, because I don't want to hold up any potential development because until we kind of trying to figure out some of the weeds. But to keep it as maybe vague or flexible with future language so that maybe a developer does come to market with a, with a creative solution to it and then we can accept it then. So that's just, just those, those thoughts.
So, so Jay, thanks for kind of taking us to that next point. So before we get into the, whether to move forward with rental, with just the rental piece, we could keep the owner occupied vague and move forward with both or, or, you know, approve as is or ask to move it forward. I guess I'd like to understand where it, make sure first, are there any other questions that, other than what, what I raised and what Councilmember Anderson raised, that you want staff to explore as far as the owner occupied? So, okay, not seeing anything else there. What is the preference, whether to move forward with just the rental piece or a non-prescriptive, the rental piece as is and a non-prespective, non-prescriptive owner occupied piece? Cap, Mayor Proton Brennack, what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I, so I'd rather us wait and do it all as one holistic solution. I think that part of this is we're learning as we go here about how, how to implement it, how it's going to work. And I would be worried about breaking it out into many pieces and having multiple ordinances that we try to push through on the topic. I'd like to see us get through this next phase of understanding before we move forward.
Councilmember Anderson?
I agree with Kathy.
Councilmember Carpenter?
Yeah, I see the logic in that, but, but by the same token, if we have something teed up and ready, I don't want to, to hold that process up unduly if, if not necessary.
Okay, and Councilmember Shaw?
Thanks. I, I would lean towards approving the rental provision and maybe stating the for-sale product incentive, like in that first bullet, and then work to flesh out the rules if we can make them work for owner occupied. But I, I hate to hold up what a builder could expect from us or might anticipate from us because we're trying to put together information that we don't know if it will fully congeal.
So I'm wondering if we can somehow split the, split the baby that we're splitting. So I think the rental piece, everybody does have a pretty high comfort level with moving forward. I think I'd like to see different language for the owner occupied criteria that maybe isn't as prescriptive, but acknowledging it's something we want to do. So I, I would like staff to take another stab at this and bring it back to us. Kristen, do you feel like you can write something that addresses, I mean, I think everyone, you know, we want the owner occupied. To Kathy's point, we don't want a piece, and piecemeal, piecemeal, and piecemeal. If we could do the rental and acknowledge our intention with the owner occupied, we would then just amend our ordinance to accommodate the, the more specific language for the owner occupied piece, right?
Yes, I think Linda, I'll ask Linda Mitchell too. I think we, we can do that. And, and again, we're at council's discretion. If we want to hold the whole thing, we would just need to talk with Linda about how we address the Cobal project independently as a separate entity as well, just if, if we don't have anything in ordinance. So, which is again, council's discretion, but just wanted to mention that as we're kind of talking about whether we do some part or none at this point.
Kristen, before you, before we turn it to Linda, can you, can you refresh council's memory about the timing of when we'll be seeing that Cobal project? Is April timeframe or is it March?
They are actually, Kelly can jump in, but my understanding is that they're coming for SIP in February. I think it's going to Planning Commission next week. And in my conversations with Cobal, they're not planning on pulling the building permit until approximately the end of March. And that's, has been kind of our target before they would pull building permit because that's when these fees would be assessed, is at the time of building permit.
So Linda, please weigh in on this, but council would, we could look at another study session, first meeting in February, and then move it to the agenda if we felt comfortable with it, with a, or we could hear it at the second meeting in February and still meet the timeline. Is that true or not?
I think, I think with the first meeting in February being another study session and possible first reading, we can always pull it if council really doesn't feel comfortable. I do think that we can create a little more flexibility in the owner occupied criteria and, you know, address that through further council policies.
Or amend the ordinance, correct?
Correct, absolutely, yep.
Fill in it with a little more meat, but have the ordinance ready for our rental projects that are coming in front of us.
And recognize that council supports owner occupied as well, yep.
Yep. I think that's where I'm leaning, council. Are you, let's, let's study session it one more time, put it on the agenda. If it's not ready to go, we'll pull it. Is council comfortable with that for next meeting? I'll poll you. Wyn's giving me thumbs up. Councilmember Carpenter?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Brennack?
Yes.
All right. Kristen, you have what you need from us?
I do. Thank you so much. The next couple of slides are, are just kind of repeating the same criteria for the fees, which I'll go through those really quick. Just that we are doing a little cleanup in adding a new section as well, just addressing adoption of fees and that council currently has that authority to adopt fees and charges to cover costs of providing city services. So that is not explicitly stated in our ordinances and so we thought this would be a good opportunity to just add in what's already happening as far as council adopting fees by resolution to recoup city costs. And so that's the first addition to the fee section. And then on the next slide, we would just reference what we just went through as criteria. So we'll make the, the same changes we discussed tonight in the fee section as well because we just have to separate the tax versus the fee just because they're handled differently in our ordinances. And again, city council approval for any attainable housing fee waivers, but they would follow the same criteria we just went through for rental versus owner occupied. So we'll more generalize the owner occupied piece in this section as well. And I think that's it. Next slide. Perfect.
Great. Council, any question about, questions about the last few slides that Kristen just quickly went through? Any, okay, I'm not, I'm not seeing any. I want to say a huge thank you to Diane and Catherine for joining us this evening and for the information and they've already provided to staff. And as you think about the issue, council's objective and what we're trying to accomplish, and if you have any ideas about how we could improve the language regarding the owner occupied, we really appreciate you mentioning it to staff and letting them know that. Again, huge thank you to staff for doing the great work and continuing to bring, be creative and innovative as we try and accomplish this goal of providing housing for, crazy to say, 80% AMI, but a for-sale product in our community, I think it would be a wonderful addition. So with that, unless, anything else from council? Okay. Thank you again to Catherine and to Diane. We'll, we'll, we'll be talking to you soon, I think. And thank you, Kristen. So I'm going to move on to our next item this evening. It's a project.
Okay, thank you for inviting us.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
Good night.
Good night. We're going to have a project update and 2021 engineering consulting contract and Kristen is going to lead this. And then our, our friend that I love to see as often as I can, John Cotton from By Design LLC will, is also joining us this evening. So welcome, John, and I think, Kristen, are you going to introduce this?
Definitely. Thank you again, Mayor and Council. I don't think the next presenter needs introduction to council, but I've had the pleasure over the last couple of years to, you know, work with John continued as he's helped with our public works transition, helped with certain project oversight. And we just thought it'd be a good opportunity in the new year for John to first for John to first give kind of an update on the two large projects he assisted the city with last year. And then secondly, because his contract is on a year-by-year basis, wanted to have him discuss continuing his consultant contract, which we definitely still see the value that he brings to us on being available and helping on the several, you know, topics that he'll go through in his presentation. So with that, I will turn it over to John. And John, thank you so much for being with us, even though it's virtually tonight. We really appreciate it.
Well, thank you, Kristin, I appreciate that introduction. And appreciate the council, miss seeing you in person, as the mayor said. But, you know, this is the next best thing, I suppose. So again, I want to thank you for the opportunity to work with the city, continue to work with the city over the last couple of years and the potential of continuing to do that into the next year. And so thank you. And with that, I will go ahead and kind of talk about where we are with some different things and then get into my contract for next year. And Jay, you're going to have to help me with how I pay, there we go.
You just ask them and they'll just move it for you, John.
All right, very good. So 2020 Contract Services were Ridge Gate Parkway widening, Phase One and Phase Two. I think you all are familiar with that. The Pond H upgrade, Phase One, which was CDOT Flatiron doing the work, and Phase Two, which was Concrete Express. And then serving as the city slash county's Denver Regional Council of Governments TAC rep, along with Art Griffiths for Douglas County. And lastly, last year, Cherry Creek Basin Water Quality Authority TAC, which I represented the city on. Next slide, please. So let's talk about the Ridge Gate Parkway Phase One project first. That was essentially bridges. There were some other ancillary work, but the majority of that work was building of the two additional bridges on Ridge Gate Parkway. Hamilton has completed all their original construction tasks. Actually, I'm sure all of you have been across there now, and those have been open now for several months. And then consisted of, as I said, the two bridges and some associated drainage and other connection improvements. And during the work on the existing two bridges, it was discovered that the bridge rail had not been galvanized prior to painting in the original contract that Douglas County did, and they were beginning to rust. So we have worked with several different groups. It's been an interesting conversation. Hamilton has now accepted a change order to remove the rails from both bridges and sandblast them, galvanize and recoat all of that railing and the attachments and all the different ancillary pieces that go with that, and then to reattach the relocated rail. If you've been through it in the last week or so, you've probably seen that we have barrier up right now because those rails are now off on most of the work. So in order to do that, we needed to find the money for it. And we were able to get CDOT to agree. We've not quite gotten to the 6.4 million grant that we got from CDOT. They've agreed to allow us to include this work to finish out the rest of that $6.4 million. We do still have some money left in the Phase One contract with Hamilton. And we also have some money that we have saved in the Phase Two. And Ridge Gate, actually Rampart Range Metro District, has agreed to allow us to use that, if you will, excess money out of Phase Two to do this work as well. And with all of that money put together, we are able to do what's in the current change order. So as I said, the railing has currently been removed and is being transported to the plant. It's actually being done in Utah. There's nobody here in town that does that kind of work. So it's being transported to Utah, they'll do the work there. And then they'll bring it back after the coating and reinstall it. And then we will be essentially done with all that work.
Hey, John, do you have a timeframe or are you getting to that? Do you know when we anticipate those rails being put back and?
Well, we just got an email today that they found some things and I'm not, I don't know exactly what they found or the scope of what they found. But as they were sandblasting, apparently they found some additional things that need to be redone. So there's probably, number one, a little bit of a change in money coming again and probably in timeframe. Originally, they had hoped to have all of that done in about four weeks, four to six weeks, and have it back here to be reinstalled. We'll see what comes out of what's happening right now. But I expect that's probably going to extend it somewhat. I don't know how much yet.
And there was no warranty from the original contractor on this?
Well, the warranty was probably a one or two-year warranty and those were up for a number of years.
Okay.
So, and again, it was a Douglas County contract, so we really don't have any direct connection to that. But the, long story short, it appears, I think we've got enough slack in the funding that we have to be able to do the changes, I hope, that are in there. So hopefully we will be within the current funding allocation to be able to do all of that work. I know I just ran through a lot of stuff there. So is there any question there on that first phase of contract?
Well, you know me, I always ask them, John, but let's check in with council, the rest of council. Wynne, anything?
I just think that it would be of some value to share with the county what we've discovered so that if it's an opportunity for, you know, future for them, for better inspections or tighter contracts or whatever it is, that the, you know, best practice could at least come out of this.
Thank you, Councilmember Shaw. We have shared that with the county, very frankly with them. And, you know, they really don't have any response to it, but I really wasn't expecting one either.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Carpenter, anything?
Yeah, no, that was my initial question too, is who was responsible for it not being galvanized? But it sounds like it was quite some time ago. And I know Douglas County already is a financing partner in the project as well. But if there is some money that we can, that we do have available, it's something we have to do, obviously. But I would just reiterate that I know that there'll be additional change orders coming down the pike as well as we know more about what the issues are. But just to keep some pressure on Douglas County, I know they're a great partner, but, you know, it's all about quality control and oversight as well. So just my two cents.
Thanks, Councilmember Carpenter, yeah. Councilmember Anderson?
John, thanks for the creative financing to keep this moving forward. It's always unfortunate when you find something you don't expect and you got to go back and fix it. John, is there any risk associated with not having the railing in place?
Not well, I suppose there's always the thing you could never think of that we haven't thought about. But we have concrete barrier up there, which is actually, if anything, more, is probably a safer thing to have even in the railing, even though the railing is crash tested.
Cap, Mayor Protan Brannick?
No questions for me. I'm just glad that we're getting it taken care of now in this phase of the project. So please have it being done, thanks, John.
Sure.
Yeah, it's almost like when I do a repair on my house, John. I open up that wall and there's always something fun to find underneath there. So unfortunately, we're finding it, or fortunately. So, all right, next one.
Next slide, please. So let's look at Phase Two, the road and utilities. We actually, I just got an email at five o'clock today saying that they completed the last of their punch list work, which is a great sigh of relief. They've, so they've completed the original construction task. They did all of the mass grading and erosion and erosion control related to that. Put in the sanitary sewer, the storm sewer and the water lines. They did most of the paving, the sidewalk and the bike path and the traffic signal revisions and fiber installation. I didn't put in here, but there's also streetlights that they installed. Substantial completion has been reached. We've issued a substantial completion notice as of last week. And most of the punch list has been completed. In fact, as of today, as I said, they, I got an email saying that they had completed the last item on the punch list. We agreed, because of the weather, there is a, the asphalt mix on this project has a binder, basically the asphalt itself. The binder is a spec that can only be put down when the temperature is 50 degrees and rising. They have a number of places where they have to go back and replace some of that top lift of the asphalt because of construction defects, I guess I'll call them. The smoothness and that sort of thing wasn't met. And so obviously, they were not going to be able to do that in this timeframe. So we have agreed to allow that work to be categorized as warranty work. Otherwise, we would have been having them on liquidated damages from now until March or April, whenever that was going to happen, which we didn't believe was the appropriate thing to do. So we have agreed to allow that to become warranty work and require them to come back as soon as temperatures and asphalt. They actually don't make this binder during the winter. So as soon as the refineries start making it again and we can get it, we've told them that they need to come back and do that work. So that'll be deferred until spring when temperatures rise enough. So as I said, final completion has been issued with requirements for the above repairs in the spring. The roadway is now fully open to traffic and it's two-lane configuration, two-travel lane configuration. We don't really want to open that third lane. If you've been out on there, we've got, we got people flying down that road. I've personally seen people doing probably 55 to 60. And I've heard stories of people going faster than that on there. So, you know, I don't know what you do, but part of that rate not opening to three lanes is to try to keep that speed down a little bit on the traffic. But it is now open to full lane, open to traffic and it's full configuration of how it, full interim configuration, if you will. And until there's, you know, significant construction in Ridge Gate on the east side, I would recommend that you keep it in that two-lane configuration until the traffic becomes, you know, much more dense. And also, as you begin to put traffic signals on there, that will tend to slow some of that traffic as well. So that's kind of where we are as of today. Any questions I could answer on that?
And John, I'm just taking a look at the time. So unless there's some burning question from council, I am going to move on because we spent more time on our first item than I think we had budgeted for. So interesting that Phase Two is finished before Phase One, but this is 2020 and 2021, so we'll just go with it. So we'll move on.
Next slide, please. Pond H upgrade. Some of these projects has never seemed to end. The construction, you can see the photo of the completed work. This was taken last fall. So the construction is complete, the pond volume has been confirmed. We've got sufficient pond volume in it to satisfy Mile High Flood District. And CDOT still has some cleanup remaining, which has been something of a struggle to get them to do. Can you see my arrow on your screen?
No, John, but is it the north side of the slide?
Yeah, the north side of the slide, that kind of dark.
Yep.
Black color.
Yep.
That is a, what's called a micro pool. It's right in front of the outlet structure, which then goes into the pipe underneath the road. CDOT, well, Flatiron, when they built this, never cleaned that out. It is absolutely full of mud. And I've been working with CDOT to try and get them to get Flatiron out there. As I'm sure you're aware, they have lots of problems already with Flatiron. And this is probably not their top priority. I've heard several things back from them that weren't correct. And I talked to Jacob James today, and I just sent another email to CDOT telling them that what they told us, I didn't put it quite this way, but it just isn't true. And so we're trying to get them to come clean that out. Otherwise, the city's going to have to clean it out. And that's not, I mean, it's not a huge number, but it's not an inconsequential number to clean that out either. Basically, you have to bring in a VAC truck and pump it all out. That's the bad news. The good news is it is complete. And I will be working with Mile High Flood District to get it accepted for major maintenance by Mile High Flood as soon as we can get that pond, that micro pool cleaned out. Because first thing they're going to say is we're not going to do anything until you finish that. So as soon as that happens, I will get in touch with, I have already got in touch and just haven't set up a meeting with them yet to come out and take a look at everything and try and get that approved. And Furniture Row has accepted the completion. Kind of a minor thing, but something we'll probably take care of in the next couple of months is that we have a, the city has an easement, keep saying we.
Old habits.
The city has an easement over that entire property. And that easement will need to be vacated. It was there for the construction work, and that will be coming up here probably in the next month or two. Any questions on that?
I'm going to say we're good, John, and go ahead. I'm getting head, I'm seeing head nods, we're okay. So next one.
So.
Now I'm eating potatoes, John, getting a little straight.
Now for something near and dear to my heart. 2021 Consulting Agreement. I've submitted an updated agreement. Kristin has that, and I don't know whether she's forwarded it yet or not to Linda, but that will be happening. The agreement's substantially the same as the 2020 agreement. It includes assistance with final closeout of Phase Two Ridge Gate Parkway contracts, assistance with completion of the bridge rail rehab work and contract closeout, services to obtain Mile High Flood District acceptance upon dates for major maintenance, representation on the Dr. Cog TAC, and then anything else that the city requests from me. And just to let you know, representation on the Cherry Creek Basin TAC, I am no longer the city's representative to the Cherry Creek Basin TAC, Jacob James is. However, I got the board, Councilmember Anderson knows about this. I was able to get the board with Councilmember Anderson's great assistance to be appointed as an ad hoc member of that TAC committee. So that's essentially what it is, that you'll see the contract. There's very few changes in it. And basically, these are the things that I'm doing.
Yep, and I did include that in the council packet this time as a draft, so.
Yes, yes, it is there. So thank you, Kristin, for doing that. So I'm going to quickly run through if there's any questions from, and John, I think we're all very appreciative to have your eyes continued on Cherry Creek, though I know Jacob does a phenomenal job as well. So we've got like, we've got two great folks there now advising us. And Mike, anything, any questions?
No, I'd just like to thank John for his continued support of Cherry Creek Water Basin quality issues. He's been with that for a long time, he's got a wealth of experience. Thanks, John, for continuing to support it.
My pleasure.
Mayor Protan Brannick?
Yeah, no questions, just as always. Miss getting to hear from you more often, John, but really appreciate your work out there.
Thank you.
Councilmember Carpenter?
No, thanks, John, for all that you do throughout the year and great seeing you. And your institutional knowledge is very valuable, so we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Shaw?
And ditto for all of that. We are so lucky to be able to have your added expertise on some of these things. Thanks, John.
I appreciate the, I appreciate the work and I appreciate being able to continue with the city. Thank you.
And I want to just echo the thanks of my fellow council members, John. And when we get to me. And when we get to meet back in person, we would love to see you come back in person because we may have to review this contract or something. We'll find some to get you there at the podium, at the old podium for old times sake. But again, uh, your investment and collaboration and insight and intelligence uh, for the city of Lone Tree has just been a true gift to this community. And we're thrilled that you are willing to still continue with us. So thank you uh, for all your great work this past year. And we're looking forward to even more successful 2021. So.
Thank you.
All right, John, take good care and we can't wait to see you in live, live in person. Okay? All right, guys, moving on to our zoning code and design guideline update, a proposed approach, because we've had to pivot our favorite word. Uh, and Kelly first from our community development director is going to lead this conversation. Kelly.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the time tonight. I don't think this is going to be quite as complicated as your previous two items tonight. Um, I can have the next slide, please. Uh, as you recall, council did previously support, um, hiring a consultant to perform a comprehensive update to chapter 16, which is the zoning chapter of our municipal code. And that was set for 2020, but unfortunately, as you know, events occurred that will preclude us from, um, being able to fund that project in its entirety. Um, so we're, we're looking at a different approach that will enable staff to perform, um, some of the work in-house and really target, um, those sections that we think are most important, um, and have really the most bang for the buck. Um, and so that's what we're here tonight to do is to really just, you know, before we head off on, on that path, we just want to check in with you and make sure that you agree with that general approach. Um, next slide, please. And so again, the zoning code, as you know, is an extension of the city's vision for the future. So this is what establishes zone districts within the city and the regulations and processes regarding the use and development of all property within the city. So, um, it's important that this document is legally sound, that it is consistent with the city's plans and contains all the up-to-date terminology and processes and is easy to use for our, our businesses and our residents. Next slide, please. So with that in mind, we are recommending at this time that we really reduce the scope of the update to focus on things that we think are going to be most used, um, by, uh, the community in the coming years as we look towards economic recovery, uh, in particular, as well as things that, you know, we know that staff has, uh, direct experience in and working with our legal counsel and other, uh, departments. We feel that we can tackle, uh, in-house relatively easily. So, um, the recommendation is to take on the site improvement plan section of our zoning code. And, um, again, this is regarding, um, all development within the city, uh, with the exception of single-family detached homes. So this is something that our planning commission, council, staff, we touch this particular topic on a very regular basis. And we think there's some opportunity there to do some really great improvements, um, and clarifications in this section. Um, and tied to that is our, uh, city design guidelines. As you know, this is really an extension of our site improvement plan process. Um, it's adopted by the city. It's referenced in our code. And so we think it would be difficult to try to update one without the other. Um, so we're recommending both of those documents be evaluated at the same time. Again, we're excited to look at things like, um, opportunities for approval standards that tie in sustainability, um, technology, innovation, um, all of the types of things that we've been talking about more and more in the last few years. Um, we think can really be covered in, um, both the site improvement plan section as well as our city design guidelines. And then the, the final component of our recommendation would be to look at our temporary use section of the code. Again, kind of tying back to, um, uh, the state of our economy right now, what businesses are doing to get creative um, in terms of, uh, you know, whether it's outdoor seating or temporary uses that can enable, um, their businesses to succeed. Those tend to fall under this temporary use category of our code. So we want to make sure that that is, um, as up-to-date and user-friendly as possible. Next slide, please. So we think, um, with your concurrence that we could tackle, um, that uh, and complete that with the public process, um, in the fall of this year. And, um, I'll talk about kind of what that would look like if you agree to that. So, um, afterwards, we would begin looking at other sections of the code kind of in, in tangent with, you know, whether there is any, uh, additional funding that would be available to assist us in some of these, um, topics. Some are more complicated than others, um, requiring technical assistance, legal assistance, and just, you know, input from folks like consultants who do municipal codes all the time. But, you know, we can, we can kind of revisit these topics as we move forward and see what the council's priorities are and the capacity, um, to do things, uh, in-house or with a consultant or some version thereof, depending on, on your preference. Um, so, uh, next slide, please. Just the final, um, sort of next steps with this would be, um, again, we're looking for your, um, endorsement of the phased approach to the code amendments, beginning with SIP, design guideline and temporary uses. And if you agree with that, our next steps would be to, um, consult with our planning commission and find out, um, you know, what their initial input would be on this. Um, we would begin evaluating these sections more, um, in more detail. We would conduct public outreach and a referral process, come back to the city council on more of the actual content and the recommendations that we would be making. And, um, as many times as we needed to, and then eventually these would be subject to public hearings before the planning commission and city council. And with that, I'd be happy to take questions and, and hear from you.
Thanks, Kelly. I will open it up to council. A quickly run through, council member Shaw.
No questions. Thank you.
Council member Anderson.
Uh, no questions. Just appreciate Kelly, uh, looking at doing this a little differently. And we will, this past year has been a challenge for everybody and people have been very creative. But I think this approach allows us to make progress in some of the more important, uh, sections of the code. Um, thank you for bringing a proposal to us.
Council member Carpenter.
Thanks, Kelly. I think it looks great. I also like the, the fact that we're empowering and including the planning commission in the process as well. So, um, look forward to seeing more of it.
Mayor Preten Brannick.
No questions.
All right. So Kelly, I think we're all in agreement. We appreciate your, uh, flexibility and resilience in light of the budget cuts and, uh, on the right track as far as we're concerned. So thanks for the good work. I'm looking forward to, uh, starting to review, uh, phase one.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thanks. All right. Next up, we've got our police chief Kirk Wilson. An update on our community police advisory committee. Very excited to hear about this. Chief, how are you?
I'm good. Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Thanks for having me. I was hoping this time would be in person, but we didn't quite make it, but yeah, I think we're, I think we're getting closer.
Inching closer.
So I did want to take this time to update you on the, um, community police advisory committee, otherwise CPAC. A little bit easier to say. Um, uh, I'm sorry, next slide, Jay. So I think it's in support. I, I feel pretty good about, uh, that we're in alignment with one, our, our, uh, big ideas and our, um, strategic plan to have an active community engagement and safety awareness. I think it was the right time for us to, to form this. It's been something I've been thinking about since I got here. And so I think, uh, with all that's happened, it was, it was a really good time. Uh, and I think that was represented by the number of people that were interested and how quickly we were able to put it all together. Um, and so I want to thank Bill Medina, who helped, um, form the committee and solicit interest in the community members and business folks. And so, uh, the emphasis is on having a diversity in the group. And so we ended up with 14 interested persons. We selected 10 so we could have, you know, a manageable group to have, uh, good discussions with. Um, next slide, please. And so really the purpose, uh, behind it is to, you know, examine community issues, um, related to public safety. Um, have, uh, the folks that are on there, um, look at our processes and, and, and really just provide us some input, um, and maybe some creative solutions we hadn't thought about. And then, uh, we want to promote the vision, mission and values of the Lone Tree Police Department and, you know, continue to engage with the community. So everybody on there has, uh, agreed to a two-year term. Um, we're, and go ahead and go to the next slide, Jay. And so I'll, I'll get to what kind of what we've gone over so far. So we, we, thanks to Bill, because I'm not that great with Smartsheet. We were able to use Smartsheet, which we can collaborate with them online and share documents with them. Um, and we solicited questions from them ahead of time. And so we have sort of a question and answer thing on that, uh, website. And then we provided them a multitude of documents that they can access anytime they want. You know, um, as they have questions and are trying to review those. And you probably haven't seen it yet, but we've put up about, I think it's like 20, um, uh, policies, uh, that we, we didn't normally have our policies online, but we put up 20 to 25, uh, policies that I believe are, um, really of community concern, such as use of force, discipline policy, um, less lethal stuff, that type of thing. And so most commonly asked questions about our policies. So those are all on, online now. Anybody can go on there and read those. Um, go ahead, next, next, next slide. And so we ended up with a really, I think, a pretty good diverse group of folks. Uh, everybody here is a resident of Lone Tree, some, I think for many, many years. And then, um, we have one, uh, person, which is Doug Price. He lives, you know, a stone's throw out of Lone Tree, but he is the security director for, um, Charles Schwab. And so we ended up, I think, with a really, uh, a really good group and, and, uh, they're very engaged when we're meeting with them and they have great questions and, um, good, good. Do you guys have any questions about the makeup of the group?
No, I mean, it, it looks great. Chief, could you just briefly highlight? I know Dr. Allen has got a strong background, teaches this. I mean, I think they all bring a unique skillset to the group. We obviously know Elizabeth Matthews very well from her great work, uh, for, for all of us. But it looks like there's a diversity of ages and ethnicities and men and women. I mean, was that part of the process in selecting these individuals?
Well, yes. I mean, we, we tried to, the way we put it out there was asking and, and, and making a point of saying that's what we were looking for, is try to get as diverse a, a group as possible. It did weigh in on the decision about who we selected to be on the, on the group. Um, but we were very fortunate, in my opinion, that we, we did get a diverse, uh, group of folks that were interested in, um, getting involved in the police department and interested in, um, um, you know, just finding out kind of what we do and learning as well. Um, and I think we're, we're, we're very fortunate with the group we got. They're, they're very successful, very smart people. Um, and so far, like I said, the meetings have been, have been very good. Lots of questions. The first meeting lasted almost three hours. Um, and, um, trying to keep it down to two, uh, but I've spent some, the meetings we've had have, have been very lengthy in the fact that they have so many questions about what we're doing and how we do it. And, um, and I think been pretty open to, to listening to, um, you know, just how the police department operates. And that's kind of the stage we're in right now is just trying to, uh, provide them information. So, you know, these are the meetings that we've had and we, the first meeting, I did just do a, a department overview and then we established some bylaws. And then we, we essentially let them decide, you know, hey, what, what do you want to hear about? What, what do you want to know about? And so the first thing they selected was hiring process. So we presented on exactly what steps we go through to hire. Um, and, and then we went over, they were interested in employee wellness. Then our next one, which is I believe this Thursday, we're going to go over the use of force policy, although I see I miswrote policy as police, but, um, and then we're going to go over the use of force policy and the associated training, uh, that we do with it and, and answer some questions about that. So we're, we're getting into some more meaty topics. Um, I think over the course of this next year, we'll have delved into almost every policy and, and, um, and, you know, hopefully they've done their homework. I asked them to read this policy before we did the training. And I, I have no doubt that I'm going to be getting some very, very good questions and, and, and lots of good input from them. So. Um, next question? I mean, I'm sorry, next slide.
Do you have any questions? So.
Questions. So that was pretty quick. Um, again, I'm, I'm really happy with the group that got put together and, and the level of participation that they've shown and, and, and I think interest in what we do. And I think as we get to some more heavy topics where we are looking for input, I, we got a good group to, to provide that.
And can you elaborate for council a little more on how they are going to provide the input? Uh, as you have gone through, uh, you know, kind of the overview and their understanding, what, for example, did they have any feedback on the hiring process? Did they have any recommendations to you about how you might do things differently or consider other things?
You know, they didn't. I think they were actually pretty, um, surprised at just the indepthness of our background process and all the different things we do actually put officers through as far as from, um, you know, psychological, the, the polygraphs, the really intrusive background process. And as we went through all of that with them, I, I, you know, I doubt many of them have ever had to have that level of background, had to go through that level of background for the jobs that they do. So I think if anything, I, you know, um, they were impressed with the fact of just the level of which we do. I, I do end up answering a lot of questions about, you know, they ask me a lot of questions about police work in general. So, you know, they might ask me a question like, well, do all police departments do this? And do all police departments do that? And so sometimes we get in some areas where I can't speak for all police departments or, or what other people do. I can only really talk about what I know. And so, you know, I think that, that's the interesting thing about this group is they're, you know, with, with everything that's going on, you know, they're interested in police as a whole, which is the entire country. And unfortunately, just like anything else, you know, we really can't speak for all other departments and all other, you know, um, uh, cities out there. So I do the best I can, but I, I try to curtail it back into Lone Tree and, and the things that I know, um, most about and not try to speak for the entire, um, law enforcement community.
Counsel, what questions you have? Uh, council member Carpenter.
No, great job as always, chief. I think that the timing of it is perfect in terms of community outreach and involvement and input. Um, and it's a group that, that someday I want to be a part of too, when the time comes. So great job on it.
Okay. Well, thanks.
Council member Shaw.
I like to hear that they're curious and they have great input and, um, they're engaged. I really like to see that, uh, um, there were residents, a near resident and, uh, some business representatives, uh, among them. It seems like a really good group and I appreciate what you've done to, uh, uh, to gather them.
Thanks. And you know, Mayor, I don't think I quite answered your question on what, what would they provide us input for? And I think the way that once, once I get the, them a complete overview, I think, and, and make them more familiar with what we already do, um, as they read these policies that we're going to go through, there may, I think that's where we're going to start getting some input from them. I already had some input on our mission and vision and value statement. And, and, and I think we are going to maybe revisit ours a little bit, uh, to be, to include some different language that was brought up by the group, like empathy and, and inclusiveness and things like that. So I, I think that's kind of where I see them providing input is when we, we have them see a policy, they can make a recommendation about that. And then we'll consider that internally about whether that's appropriate or not for, but I think, you know, having them have input on what our department should be valuing and what we should be focused on from their perspective is really important right now. And I don't think it's going to be far off what we're doing, but I do think, um, that's where I think we'll get is, is try to be more in alignment with what, what does our community expect? And, and what do they want from their police department? So I, I hope, I hopefully that answers your question.
It does. And I think council were very interested in understanding how the feedback you're getting is being incorporated into, uh, into what, how you choose to incorporate the feedback. So, and, and I recognize there's still learning. They're still in the learning phase of it. Um, council member Anderson.
Uh, pleased to hear, chief, that, uh, you're off to a good start and you've got some people that you're comfortable with in terms of their seriousness, uh, and their interest. Uh, sounds like we're in a learning phase at this point in terms of, there's a lot that they'd like to know about policing. And I appreciate very much that you're open with them to share that. Uh, I think it's kind of a work in progress in terms of you got to let it go for a while to see where they want to go in terms of where they feel comfortable making input or recommendations. But it sounds like you made a good start and it's very timely that, uh, we took this on and you took it on, uh, at this point in time. So thanks.
All right, thanks.
Mayor Preten Brannick.
I only had, um, one question, uh, Kirk, is really around like the length of term we're thinking for them. So what was their expectations when they joined the group about how long they would be serving?
They knew it was two years. It was all part of the posting. I think we actually made a slight change on that, if I remember right, to, I think we're going to have some serve three. And so we can stagger the group, if I remember what we agreed to. But I believe that's what it was. And we're going to have a group of them stay on for three years and then the others will be on for two. And I think, and you're allowed to extend, I think, one time as well. So.
Okay. Yeah, I think that, you know, there's two sides to every argument clearly. And having them have a little bit of tenure, I think ultimately will end up behooving some of the, you know, the more they learn, the more time spent is a complicated area. And so I think that's good. And I also think it's nice to have kind of an influx of new people over time so that we can get, you know, more people involved. So just more curious how that was going to be managed. But I'm really excited about, like Jackie hearing, the kinds of things that the community can share with us around this in particular. So excited to see what happens.
Well, the good news is just about everybody on this board is on probably multiple boards. So they were able to point out some flaws in our overall plan right away.
Oh, nice. Well, and we appreciate your kind of humility in that, in understanding and recognizing that. And I think that is, in addition to empathy, one of the other important characteristics of law enforcement. And you do such a great job with it. And I think we all struggled with the appropriate response from our community this year to the social unrest and challenges that were really, and questions that we, the really good questions that were being asked of us about what we were doing to address some of the social inequity. So I really appreciate your leadership on this, chief, and just, and Bill Medina as well. I know he's been contributing. You guys are a dynamic duo. So thank you very much for that. And on behalf of council, if you could please just extend our real deep heartfelt gratitude to the folks that have signed up and willing to make the commitment for two years to try and understand more about policing and understand how we could do the best job we can in the city of Lone Tree about responding to public safety and really looking forward to the outcomes here. And again, huge thanks to you and pleased to them as well.
Will do. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, thanks so much. All right, now, now to, we're hitting every topic tonight, guys. Pickleball, I don't know how they got our pictures out there, the four of us, four of us. So, so we are going to talk about discussion of future pickleball court locations in Lone Tree. And Austin Good, our assistant city manager, is going to be leading it from the staff perspective. And I want to also acknowledge that I believe Rob Hanna, the executive director of South Suburban, is available as well for questions. So I will turn it to Austin to lead it off. I wish we were all out on that court together.
Someday, someday. Well, thanks, Mayor and council. And if we go to the next slide. All right, really quick, what we're doing tonight is bringing you a few options that we have for bringing pickleball to Lone Tree. This sport has really exploded. And as Rob can attest, there's never enough pickleball courts. And so what we're doing is we're exploring a partnership with Parks and Rec to bring some courts to the city. Three locations have been identified. And I'm going to actually hand it over to Rob to go through each of those after I finish up with this slide. The first one, Lonesome Pine Park, is actually in Acres Green. The reason this is on the list is because South Suburban is actually going to be doing a refresh of this park anyway, and it's in really close proximity to Lone Tree. This is just a consideration for, they are looking at potentially replacing the tennis courts in that park with pickleball. And if they do that, it's kind of a decision on the city's part. Well, actually, it's more of a response that they would take from whether pickleball courts get put into the actual city of Lone Tree, whether they'd move forward with converting those tennis courts. And I'll let Rob explain that a little bit later. The Lone Tree Rec Center is also a spot, as well as Prairie Sky Park. Those, they're two different spots within the same site. So it's, there's some interesting juggling that would have to happen in order to put it into the location in Prairie Sky Park, which I'll let Rob get into. But there has been some location in the rec center near the parking lot that looks like it could accommodate quite a few courts. We have, as part of our 2021 budgeting process, allocated some monies for partnership with South Suburban for this or another project. However, project costs haven't been identified. And that's not what we're looking, seeking input about at this time. Right now, we're really looking into diving into location. And so we'll go to the next slide. I'll go ahead and hand it over to Rob to talk about each of the locations.
Great, thanks, Austin. Mayor, members of council, appreciate you taking the time to listen to this. So as Austin said, we were originally looking at Lonesome Pine because that was already on our 2021 work plan to replace the playground and shelter, just like we have all of our parks on a rolling list. So in that, we were also going to resurface the tennis court. So there's two tennis courts out there existing. And so when we resurfaced that, we were just going to paint it to allow for pickleball as well as tennis. And then, actually, I think it was, it came up at one of our lunch discussions with the city of Lone Tree and that I think you're starting to receive a lot of feedback and phone calls from your constituents, the same as we here, that there's always asking for more pickleball courts. So in that discussion, we kind of said, well, maybe there's a partnership here. So, but understanding that Lonesome Pine is not within the Lone Tree actual city limits, even though it serves, you know, the community that I'm sure Lone Tree residents would utilize this. If we were going to build more courts and potentially light those courts, where could we do that within the city limits of Lone Tree? So head staff look at a lot of different options. And really, at the end of the day, Prairie Sky and then the area next to the parking lot at the rec center are really the only two places currently that are within the city limits that we thought that we could put at least six pickleball courts, if not eight. Six is the minimum that we need to run the type of events and programs. Eight would be, would be the best. So obviously, in future developments and neighborhood parks and community parks down the road, we can always look at that. But for right now, trying to find a place within the city limits and property that we either already own or you own, there was just not that many to go. So, so again, Prairie Sky and the rec center are the two options that we would potentially propose within the city limits. So Austin, can you go to the next slide? So within the area, again, right next to the existing parking lot. So this area was originally kind of set aside for potentially expansion of the existing rec center. So obviously, if you increase the square footage on the inside, you have to increase the parking on the outside. So that's kind of why this area is undeveloped and that. So we have that available. And then, again, the third option would be, next slide, Austin, would be to relocate the, one of the existing playgrounds over to, closer to the rec center, which actually would, would help our preschool program and have them better access to a playground closer to the facility and then potentially relocate the basketball courts. And that's kind of the other option that we've looked at in evaluating all the open space. The area on the other side, on the north side, is, there's some open area over there, but there's a gas line that goes through there with an easement. And they won't allow us to put anything on that easement. So if you just look at an aerial, you would think, oh, why don't you just put them on the, on the north side? But there's quite a few, again, obstacles that would prohibit those going in over there. So that's really the options that we're looking at. So just like in any instance where you're trying to put facilities or active areas within an existing development or existing area, that there's always going to be, you know, some people that don't want those in there and others that do. So none of these three are actually in a perfect location. But again, in trying to evaluate what property we had and existing projects that we had on the books, we thought that these three were the only options that we had available for us.
Rob, is that it?
I think that's it.
Okay, well, first of all, thank you so much. Thanks to Austin as well for getting us started on this conversation. And we certainly appreciate the great partnership with South Suburban. And we certainly appreciate you being here this evening to talk about it. I know council is probably going to have some comments. So let's start off with councilmember Carpenter.
Yeah, thanks, Rob, for being here. I know we did address this in a recent lunch that we all had. One question that I had is if we, if we do it at Prairie Sky Park and we relocate the playground, that makes sense. Where would the basketball courts go? Would they go in that same area that you alluded to, next to the parking lot? Or where exactly would they go?
Yeah, so obviously, the parking lot would be available if we weren't going to put any pickleball courts along there. But we'd also try and see if there was any place on the north side that would accommodate those and maybe fit in a little bit better than just having them off the side over there. So, but we do currently, we get some complaints from at least one resident that is adjacent to the basketball courts because of the noise and activity. So again, trying to find a place that wouldn't receive any complaints is probably not, not, not within our options at this point.
Yeah, good luck on that endeavor. We all know that. And then just one other question. So grading wise, I'm familiar with the basketball courts and how they're situated. There's a little bit of grade there, but I think that lends itself well to having the pickleball courts be separate and dedicated. Are there any grading issues in that parking lot area? Because I'm not too familiar with the topography there.
Yeah, it is pretty steep in there. And even if we were to expand the parking lot, it was always anticipated that we would have to put a retaining wall there. So having them lower than the, than the houses over there would definitely help. And also, there's, there's kind of that vacant lot where the, where the entrance comes in that they have their monumentations. So the houses are really, if you look at the aerial, there's probably two houses that are within the frame of that aerial that would be, you know, closest to those facilities.
Yeah, okay, yeah. Those are my primary questions. But I, I do make the point, I get asked all the time by residents about having dedicated. Pickleball is always tough when you try to re-stripe existing and you get the tennis community against the pickleball community. And we just, I think having dedicated, allocated courts would make a lot of sense. So thanks for all your work on that. It's always hard putting it all together, I realize that as well.
And especially lighted, lighted pickleball courts. So if you run U.S. Tennis Association sanctioned events, which we do, like at, at the Lone Tree Golf and Tennis Center over there, you cannot paint pickleball stripes on there or the tennis association will not have any sanctioned event. So it really, you know, prohibits us from having large facilities for both tennis and pickleball. At that point, you just have to separate them and have those facilities totally separate.
Great, thanks. That's all for me.
Mayor Protan Brennic, I heard tennis, so I immediately thought of you.
Yes, and so, and I know how dicey those USTA people are. So, so my only question, I think you just might have said it like secondarily, is, is the plan at all three locations to have lights on those courts?
Our original plan for Lonesome Pine was to just resurface and repaint so that it would accommodate both pickleball and tennis. But again, after discussions with, with the city of Lone Tree, if they were participating into that, then we could put all, we could put six lighted pickleball courts in there with some additional contribution from the city.
Got it. And the ones, however, at, within the city of Lone Tree, those are planned for lighting as well? If we were to put them in new?
Yes.
Are the basketball courts that sit in that location lit today?
Uh, no, they are not.
Okay. So, and my concern just around the lighting is, obviously, it does concern some of the residents at a larger degree than if they are not lit. So we just have to take that into consideration in the space. But do understand, wherever we choose to put them, there's going to be someone who's unhappy with that choice. Hopefully, it will be outweighed by the numbers of people who are desperate for this amenity. So, yeah, thank you for the work to give us some options so we can weigh all those things. Really appreciate it.
Councilmember Shaw.
Thanks. So Rob, I just had a couple of questions about, you know, when you're really close to the road, is there any danger that the ball will end up out in the road or are there fences? I've not played pickleball.
So the, so the courts are fenced. But, you know, if you, if you wanted to, you could definitely hit one out. But the, the pickleball balls in the rackets, they're, they're different than a tennis ball. You really need to get after it if you, if you wanted to send one high. It's not like Councilmember Brennic, when she gets frustrated and lobs one out after the court.
Right on the Lincoln. She smashes it. It's not a wow, Rob. It's a full-on overhead. And it's like a wiffle ball.
Oh, okay.
If you drive on Lincoln Avenue, you'll see the tennis balls that seem to find their way over the fence. So I don't think there's any guarantees, but.
No, it makes sense, though. If it's wiffle ball-like, it's less likely to go far. So that makes sense. And just to orient me, Lonesome Pine Park, is that actually across from the school?
That's on the corner of Maximus. And Austin, do you have that?
It is, Win, though. That's basic. I played on those tennis courts, so yes.
Okay, okay, that's great.
Across, yeah.
Okay, so that helps me orient. All right, no other questions. Thank you.
And councilmember Anderson.
Well, thank you, Rob, for offering up these locations. And, you know, we have talked about it in the subcommittee. And I think everybody appreciates that pickleball with our senior community continues to be a high interest. And people are always looking for more courts. Don't know what the right number of courts or right.
Hey, Mike, are you calling me a senior?
Pardon?
Are you calling me a senior?
Jackie, we're all seniors.
That's right. That's the goal, anyway. But I think there's vast interest by all ages in pickleball.
Yeah. So Kathy brought up an issue regarding lighting. There are other impacts associated with pickleball. Noise, for example, Rob, would you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, so, so the pickleball, when you do play it, it does make a pretty interesting thud type of sound. And our complex over at Cornerstone, we do have one resident that complains on a regular basis over there. But we did install additional landscaping. And they also make these sound screens that go on pickleball courts. And that seemed to help the situation with doing both of those. So, and, and the difference in elevation between where the pickleball courts and at least those first two houses over there, if you go over there, I don't know, it's probably a good 10 feet from the parking lot in elevation up to the ground level of what those houses are. So I think for, for lighting and for noise, that that could help the situation a little bit. The lights in the pickleball courts are not very tall. They're not like the sports complex where they're up on, you know, 50, 55 foot poles. They're, they're shorter because you just don't need that, that clear open space for that. You can put them in between the courts and stuff like that. So, so it is a different type of lighting. I would, I would compare it more to parking lot lighting than I would anything else that you might have envisioned with, with lights in a park.
And appreciate your comments about things you can do to mitigate both the lighting and the noise impacts. As you look at the rec center and the location where the basketball court is or the other location that's in the parking lot area, are there substantial differences in cost in the project to do one location or the other?
You know, the relocation of the playground and the basketball court definitely does add to the cost of the project. But I don't think the retaining. does add to the cost of the project. But I don't think the retaining wall there would be as high. So I think the option of Prairie Sky still is more expensive. But again, the one by the parking lot definitely has some cost impacts as well, too. So the actual the lowest cost for project-wise would be to put it at Lonesome Pine. And that's, again, why we started going there. But again, it has the least cost impacts. But obviously, it's outside of the the city of Lone Tree. And and I totally appreciate the the concerns about about that type of a situation.
And just for clarity, do we have any outdoor pickleball courts in Lone Tree now?
There's no lighted ones for sure. We don't have any dedicated pickleball courts. I would have to check and see if we have any that are lined with both tennis and pickleball. But we do not have any dedicated pickleball courts within within the Lone Tree city limits at this time.
And there are some private within Heritage Hills subdivision, they have private courts that are double-lined, so to speak, but no independent.
Right.
And Rob, one other issue that I appreciate you speak to, the number of courts, you say you need six, you need eight. What drives the number in terms of putting in a facility?
Yeah, it's it's like any other sporting, it's, you know, having tournaments and being able to run, you know, those larger events. It really, the six really is the absolute minimum. And again, if you have eight, you know, that's just more teams, more people have access to them. And at the end of the day, more revenue.
Anything else, Mike?
That's all right now. Thank you.
Okay, great. I think Chris is controlling our slides. But whoever is controlling our slides, could you go back to the overview of the of the parking lot option, the parking lot option? And while you're going back to that slide, I do want to speak to the issue of as far as spending, spending, these are the dollars that the city would be contributing are actually bond proceeds from a vote of the people in 2008. And during that vote, one of the other issues that failed on the ballot was the idea of spending, well, one of the issues that was very controversial was was a tunnel that would exist outside of the city of Lone Tree. There was a potential for a tunnel, and it was very, very clear the idea of spending our local dollars outside of the city was not something that the Lone Tree residents wanted, thought was appropriate, thought was the proper use of our dollars. So I feel very strongly, based on what I heard from the public, that the dollars, these dollars, do need to be spent within the city boundaries. And I think it was made very clear to me that that was the intention. So that is the preface of where I'm going to go with my comments. And so the the other option that would require the relocation of the of the park and the tennis court, excuse me, the basketball courts, as a mom, well, my my kids are now in their 20s, so it's hard to even believe. But I moved here 20 years ago, so they were little. The idea, having those three amenities in close proximity to each other, as a parent that had children running in different directions, made good sense and made it easy for me to watch the little one on the on the toddler playground while the older one was somewhere else. So just as a as a user, I like, I don't like the idea of of moving any of those or relocating them. It might make it easier for the daycare option for the center, for the for the rec center. But as a parent user of that park, it would make it less safe. I'd be having two children in two different areas. And then, once my son found basketball, it got even more complicated. So and and Rob, you may or may not be aware of, it was actually my idea to put those basketball courts in there when I was, yeah, they weren't there. And we didn't have any place in the city that other than the the schools. So that was my, that was my suggestion a long, long time ago as a commissioner, excuse me, as a council member. But the parking lot side, so that's, I don't like those those there. I'm wondering why they have to go there. They could go anywhere in that parking lot area, right? If we're going to relocate basketball courts and playgrounds, we could certainly move those pickleball courts and then repave that area. Is that true or not true?
Yes, that that's an option. It does get you further away from the front door, though. So I think if you you would get some complaints if you replace some of the prime parking with a pickleball court and move the parking away from the front door.
So what I'm thinking about is actually turning it to the east side. So we'd be moving it further away from the homes. It'd be moving it where there's a vacant parcel that I believe may have been acquired for an office site. So it's actually turning it 90 degrees almost from the way you have it, providing more parking closer to the building and pickleball courts away from houses and lights. So that would be an option as well.
Absolutely.
And I guess that would be my preference.
Yeah. That's a, that's a good point. Like I said, we were just using dimensions, a fit dimensions in this to see. But yeah, moving those to the different access access point and and adjacent may actually be a better solution. Absolutely. That's a great point.
Yeah. So I, that's kind of where I'd put my money on that. And I appreciate you being here tonight to talk to us about it. I think it would keep it away from residents, and that's going to be an office space, or whoever goes in there is going to know about it anyway. So that's my two cents. All right, with that, unless anybody has anything else, and Rob, we're going to see you later.
Yeah, I did want to, I think Councilmember Carpenter might have had something. Yeah, just a quick, you you referenced revenue, Rob. Do you envision these being paid for pay to play? Or that's just on the tournament side?
Yeah, so the way we do it at Cornerstone is we have certain, certain times that we program it for for different either events or programs. And then anytime outside of that, it's pickup only. So and then I think we actually did some reservations. So if you wanted just to go with your friends and have a guaranteed, you know, time and reservation, just like at the tennis bubble in Littleton or something, then we did charge for that. But you had a guaranteed, you know, time for that. I think we call it block time or something. But then outside of those times, obviously, people can come in and and play without having a fee charged.
Okay, thanks, Rob. Sorry about that, Austin. Oh, no, good. My comment's more of a wrap-up one, so.
Well, and so before you go, Rob, I just want to, you know, pretty direct and honest as always, I think the city, if we're contributing money, just like we did with the tennis courts, would probably want to talk about, you know, some of the some of the programming, you know, to make sure that they there was time. And it sounds like there are, there is, you know, we would probably like to talk through the programming a little bit with you if we were going to, just as we did before when we contributed money.
Yep, absolutely.
Yep. So good, good, good foreshadowing of discussion, Jay. But now, Austin?
Yeah, I just, I wanted to give Rob a big thank you for being here tonight. They are very, very busy at South Suburban right now. They just moved into the new sports complex building and moved all their offices over there. And I also heard that, I think, Rob, you guys hosted some of your first, oh, there, his new office. Pictures aren't even up on the wall yet.
On the wall, construction hat.
There you go.
But, Rob, I think you guys hosted your first members of the public in the building, right, for some ice time?
Yeah, we actually got our TCO last Friday, and we did sneak a few people in on Friday night. So but yesterday was really kind of the first day to open, open to the public, except for the restaurant and bar area that's still not complete yet.
So I just wanted to make sure that we recognize, because that's a really great asset that's just a couple miles down the road from us. So.
Congratulations on that. We're looking forward to the tour.
Yes.
Good deal. All right, Austin, anything else on this one?
That's all for me. I think we got the guidance we needed. So thank you for that.
Wonderful. All right, all right. Thanks, thanks. And then we've got next on our agenda, the COVID update from Bill Medina, who does everything. Bill, we're not making you stay till the end of council this time. So tell us, congratulations again on success of five-star. You and Austin are crushing that. But what else is happening?
Yeah, not not a lot of significant updates today. Just wanted to go through the metrics. If we go to the next slide. We are still not where we need to be, but we're trending in the right direction. So obviously, we need to get our positive, our incident rate down to 350, below 350. And our our positivity rate is trending in the right direction after going up for quite a while. And then, of course, the the good news story continues to be hospitalizations. So right now, the county has 62% of the ICU beds occupied, and the state is at 77%. So those numbers continue to look really positive. Go to the next slide. A little bit, little bit of an update on vaccination. So the dashboard that the state keeps is keeping daily update of how many people are getting vaccinated, vaccinated. Phase 1B is still ongoing. And you may have heard in the news that the governor directed the release of second doses. So that will mean an additional 40,000 doses available this week. So we've been averaging about 70,000 doses per week. So that'll make a significant impact. We've been working in partnership with Sky Ridge Medical Center to come up with a plan to have a standby list for city staff to get vaccinated. So as soon as they puncture a vial, they have to use it within five hours. So at times, they've been scrambling to find people to vaccinate, which seems kind of ironic, given the news that I'm sure all of you have been following. But what we did is we came up with a plan to have a standby list on the days that they're going to be doing vaccinations. And so we have city staff that have volunteered to be on a on a 30-minute, 30-minute response to to the medical center when we get notified of potential vaccinations available. Currently, we've got the PD vaccinated, and then six of the city staff from other departments have also been able to get vaccinated.
Are these first doses, Bill, or both doses?
These are first doses. So the the first, the second doses for the for the PD are going to be rolling around in the first week of February. Go to the next slide. And then just a little bit of an update on the the business certification program. We continue to make small strides in getting businesses to sign up. As you can see the difference there between the numbers that I presented last meeting and today, we are making some progress. We have very few that are processing in Lone Tree. We have two inspections scheduled for this week. I will say that the Tri-County has been sending over all the complaints that they're getting against five-star businesses. And the city has had no certified businesses receive any complaints. So that's really positive news. And with that, I think that's all I had for today, pending your questions.
Thanks, Bill. All right, when, any questions for Bill?
No, just, I appreciate the updates. Thank you.
And I'm getting casual now, the end of council. I need food. Mike, any questions for Bill?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Okay, Jay?
No questions. Thanks. Just keep rolling them out.
Yeah, Kathy?
Yeah, no question. Thank you.
Yeah, I think Bill recited my theme song at the beginning. I'm not where I want to be, but I'm headed in the right direction. So I keep going. That's the story of my life, Bill. But very much appreciate your good work and and looking forward to, I actually think it's important that businesses get certified, because let's remember, they can, they can, if they're certified, once we do get to to the next higher or lower level, depending on how you're thinking about it, they can still operate at a greater capacity. So I do appreciate us continuing to to encourage our businesses to to become part of the five-star process. And and I read with some, you know, Denver is trying to get this project up and running. And, you know, they they have been, you know, I think I need to ask Bill and Austin to get on the phone to try and give them some guidance, because they, God bless them, you know, they've got a much larger community to deal with. So that's completely understandable. But what you guys have done is scalable and doing such a great job in Douglas County. So super proud of you guys. So thanks for that. And thanks for the update, Bill. Okay, guys, quickly, our consent agenda review, which in addition to our minutes and claims, we're also including Resolution 21-02, a resolution adopting a plan for an area within the three miles of the city boundary. It's our three-mile boundary plan. It's something we do. You've seen it before, so it is on consent. But I want to make sure, since it's not a regular item, I'm going to call it out and see if anybody has any questions on that. Okay, I think everyone's hungry, ready for our dinner break. So this will conclude our study session, and we will reconvene, ask you to be on there a couple minutes early, but to to start our our meeting at 7 o'clock. Unless, let me just make sure, Seth, is there anything else?
Nope.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Okay, guys, we will see you at 7. Thanks, everybody.
Thanks.